Joshua, maybe you have more experience with it?
Yeah, I probably depends a lot on the workload, but I would think that Maggie made a job that time.
About that time, okay. Yeah, they certainly made it sound less like they were decided early, but we're not, we're not real.
Okay, good discussion.
There's one other thing, Dave, and you and I get crossways every time we turn around, so this is not one of them. But the sheriff's duties are arrest, detain, to secure the courtrooms. The board's job is courthouse, LEC, trust for Hoyt. It is our job to manage the courthouse. And it's your decision whether you want to do that job or you want to turn it over to the sheriff. Personally, I would like to see the board do the job you're elected to do. That doesn't mean you have to vote that way, same as the previous discussion. That's where I'm at.
I think what you're referring there too is Iowa Code thirty-one, five oh two, section one. The laws of the audit of general custody control of courthouse, uh, to the direction board. And I know when we were there in Des Moines, Mr. Phillips stated that the legislature seemed fit to place the courthouse under the ultimate control of the board supervisors. You know, and I have to sit down a minute. Please excuse me for being bushy-washing.
Good thinking.
Yes, I doubt a lot too. But anyway, they, I think where I was going when I started that was that they said the board concerned with deciding who they chose to manage.
Exactly.
Sheriff, isn't, could you share your, your communication with other sheriffs from other counties perhaps on this issue? Because as a supervisor and even just a consumer of the media, predominantly, and it seems to be best practice, that the board would outsource this to the sheriff. Would we be an outlier by doing this? Would we be, would we be forging new ground by doing this? Or would this be something that four out of five counties our size already do?
I think there's probably, if you talk about what the sheriffs do throughout Iowa, I would say if they are involved in court security, they're possibly involved in courthouse security. I know Dubuque County is, I know Waterloo, talking to Tony Thompson and Blackhawk, that was privatized. But what he had was, he had five deputies that were assigned to the courtroom so they could also come down and help in the courthouse. So he wasn't too worried about it. And then the amount of money, he, he was given a certain percentage of that money back to pay for his courthouse courtroom security, so.
I understand you from ISAC, is that where the only county along with Blackhawk does a lot of this?
That does it, this, right.
Lynn County, Johnson County deputies and all the other sixteen that were presented at ISAC.
We have deputized.
Well, most don't even have security, so, I mean, so if you want, most don't even have it. But I, I would agree with that, there, there are different ways.
Right, those that do have deputies. And we're unique in a lot of ways because years ago, when Mary's been here, the longest, is that we got away from using deputies because they went to civilian side, the civilian transport, civilian side, this was cheaper. But through collective bargaining, now it's almost there. And it would have been wiser to have deputies, but I understand why way back, they may have gone that route. But today, with all the requirements that are put on peace officers, you're better to have sworn peace officers than you are sometimes civilians. We're covered because I can train them and put them under the sheriff. And it is nice to say that they are graduate of the Iowa law enforcement academy also.
You know, just per, you know, everyone looks at things differently. Personally, I like the, the suits. I, I think that gives a much friendlier entrance as opposed to, to uniforms. That's just me, I mean, I, I know, I know, I'm just saying.
When the little kids come, now you're.
Well, I know, but in this day and age, it is, but you know the climate and the culture across the country, so.
The climate here isn't the climate around the country. Climate here is law enforcement's favorable, and that's.
I just said I like it. I mean, I just said, I, I, I don't have a problem with the way they do it at the federal building.
All right.
One thing I might add is, I understand legislature, the politics, is there is legislatures being proposed that would make it mandatory that it's, I think it's a bill that we heard about at ISAC. There's a bill that they're trying to put forward that would make it mandatory that the courthouse security is done by sheriffs.
Well, that would certainly solve the problem.
That'd be very expensive though, because they want deputies. And there'd be another unfunded candidate, and then we go through the roof.
Yes, sir.
I, I would resist waiting on the purr board ruling. I don't think that there's anything that is mandatory or legally binding on this board in order to do its due diligence and its function. And I think the purr board really would have a completely different set of facts if this board so moved and decided. And I actually think you would be causing an even greater rift if you took sworn law enforcement and said that they're now asking employees and you go out down a whole new set of possible litigation, which I think is something we aren't bound by, by doing.
We do have a recommendation from HR that we maybe should wait for the purr and from asking to wait for the purr. I would suggest we give it a couple of weeks and see what transpires. We don't need to start a fire, we don't need.
Wait this long. So just to make sure I'm clear, if the purr board's ruling.
Doesn't make any difference which way it is, but we don't want to send the message that we're jumping their decision. That makes sense?
No, I would agree with Supervisor Taylor and the fact that, that we can move ahead with this.
I think what you're not looking at is what I was told, that if you vote to go with the sheriff and do not wait for the purr board, that it is possible you would be facing conjunctive court with purr.
Based on a ruling that they have not delivered.
Haven't been involved enough with that.
I'm just telling you what I was told.
Yeah, she's, I think she's talking. The, the one thing I would say, these, I don't, I don't look at them, no, I'm the guy that's here to implement things, not to create policy. So what I would say is that the sheriff certainly would need time to transition. And maybe this gives time to begin to work, at least to transition this. It, it just gives us an opportunity to wait. I think we just, we act from a greater point of knowledge, I think, if we have a purr rule in hand, just a thought.
Mr. Chairman, any action we take could be scheduled for after March twenty-second regardless, regardless of when the action is taken, whether we wait, which I'm not in support of, or whether we move ahead with this for the next agenda.
Could you wait two weeks? And you research for us?
I can talk with that and try to get up to speed on that.
Okay, two weeks? All right. Citizens' concerns, anyone like to speak to the board?
Lisa McHale, District Purr Administrator. I hope to come next week, but I'm not available. So I thought I would bring some information to the board about magistrate nominating commission, which you have positions to fill. So I made a copy of the code section, code sections and some information for you to kind of give you an overview of what your responsibility as a board is. The code indicates that you must appoint two lay commissioners to serve six-year terms. And the current terms for the commissioners would expire December thirty-first in the year 2020. The magistrate nominating commission basically does two things. Whenever we have a magistrate vacancy, and that could be when somebody resigns, retires, dies, or when their term expires, they nominate the magistrates. And in Woodbury County, we have two magistrates at this point in time. Also, when the, I might indicate that the current magistrate terms will expire July thirty-first, 2017. Also, whenever we have a district associate judge position open, the magistrate nominating commission nominates three individuals to the district judges who select one to serve as the district associate judge. And because it is not unlikely that oftentimes magistrates and district associate judges ultimately find themselves as district judges, that this is a very important job and can be very influential in how our court system operates. And so the information from the code there can identify is what the board is to do. And after you identify the two individuals, you certify the names to the auditor, who, who must then certify to the clerk of court the names, addresses and term of appointment for that person. And so I think you have at least one more appointment to be made. And, and there will be some work to do. Unfortunately, we can never really time when vacancies do occur. And so a person could be engaged in activity next month if we had a vacancy occur for some reason. Sometimes they go for years and don't do anything. So it's hard to get anyone really excited about a job when it depends on what company is in terms of how often they do get together. The magistrate nominating commissions do typically meet during the workdays at the courthouse to complete their work. And so when, when the time does come, there are vacancies, it could be daytime meetings, interviews that are conducted for them to fulfill their duties.
So who's out there that should be interested in this?
I would think any citizen that's interested in the operation of court system would be interested. It definitely is impactful in terms of, you know, who is a judge and who is not a judge that serves our communities. So certainly somebody who's got a flexible schedule so that when the time comes, you know, they can make themselves available for an afternoon or two to complete their work. And then when the magistrate nominating commissions do have vacancies to fill, sometimes they do conduct individual interviews with applicants. And that could be done after hours on their own time, that's also at their own discretion. Does that help?
Yes.
Give a little extra info. Well, good luck with that.
Thank you. Board concerns, comments? Okay, Mark. We need to adjourn the Board of Supervisors meeting, need a motion?
We'll adjourn.
Work, okay, need a second? Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Now, we need to open the Orton Slough Drainage District meeting. Mark?
At the end of December, you took quotations or lumped some quotation to do, prepare a set of plans for improvements to the Orton Slough Drainage District, its existing tile system. Last time we were out on that Drainage District, I noted damage to a number of the tile sections. Those need to be quantified and put in a format, can be left to contract to allow that Drainage District structure to work at its optimal efficiency. We received three competent quotations. The low quotation came from INS Group out of Storm Lake. And if you would approve their appointment to this, we'll come back to the contract in a couple of weeks that would allow that work to begin. I spoke with Leo Yocum, who's one of the, he's one of the landowners within the district. They had initially asked us to not award while they explored the options of having their Drainage District taken over by their own group of trustees. They've decided to leave this matter in the hand of the Board of Supervisors, so.
Now, the reason this Storm Lake group is so low is because they've already done a lot of stuff.
They, they know the district inside and out after all the work that they've done for them. So it was twenty-five hundred dollars for INS Group, eighty-nine hundred dollars for B N K, and it was eleven thousand six hundred, was it? I don't know if you don't remember. I think it was eleven thousand six hundred for.
Need a motion to approve the engineering company?
Do you have a letter from Mr. Yocum or any of the ones that were considering becoming trustees in the Drainage District?
I, I caught Leo on his way to Florida by telephone, that's all.
He didn't submit one to take it over either?
No.
So it is what it is?
Yeah, they, they did consult with Farmers Stan Munder. And they also consulted with the folks at Farmers District. They really don't share an outlet. As you remember, the Hackley recently combined with Farmers. So now there is no longer a Hackley Drainage District of Board Administrators. The Hackley and Farmers share the same outlets, so there's some tie there. The Orton Slough doesn't share that same relationship with Farmers District since it has its own mountain, but it rounds light of it. That was one of the things they ran into, plus they had difficulty finding people who are interested in serving as trustees, once it got beyond Mr. Yocum. I, I don't have anything in writing at this point in time. If you prefer to have that, I would obtain that and we can.
No, you'd have to have him write a letter saying he wants to take it over, so he could write a letter to say he doesn't want to take it over.
Well.
It is, it's.
It, it's still the, the board is still the trustees of the district. And I think there is a recognized need of, or a recognized understanding of landowners out there that there is a need to repair the tile, repair the intakes and explore whether the ditch needs to be cleaned out from the railroad tracks to the main intake.
Mr. Yocum did visit with myself and Diane, and Mr. Butler's here tomorrow.
Oh, about taking over as trustees, yes.
After we talked to them, they kind of outshook our shaking their heads and said, I don't think we're interested. Just have you gentlemen, ladies, take care of it.
It is a bigger job than a lot of people.
Oh, yeah.
I think it is.
Yes.
Yeah.
Need a motion to accept the bid from the Storm Lake engineer? Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
We'll try and get back to the contract of board next week.
Okay, I propose a five-minute bathroom break.
I, I propose we go to lunch.
I'd rather go to one-thirty and. What's the pleasure? What's the pleasure? Do you want a break, come back in a half hour, or do you want to just get it?
I'd like to get it over with, but makes no difference.
You want to take a lunch break?
I'm weak, I could probably.
Yeah, we're gonna have to not do it. Can we take a half hour? Does that work?
Yep.
Yeah, wait until.
All right, we will re-adjourn at one-fifteen.
All meetings back to order?
Budget? Starting with supervisors, board expense. It appears to me that the reason for the increase is one person taking health insurance for the family. There's not much we can do there.
Not much we can do with that, no.
Do you want to go one at a time, or can we lump some together?
Last week, Mr. Brown was giving out handouts of all of them. I don't have one for this week. Okay, there you go.
You can have mine.
Here's another. Chairman? All right, second one, board administration. There again, a one-point-one-five increase, which is basically salary increase. Am I right?
Correct. We did reduce, she did reduce the publications. That potentially might go up because our minutes can be rather longer, much longer. So publications might go up, but we can wait and see.
Okay, then we get to public bidder, and I have something I'd like to do here.
We.
I was gonna do all the board of supervisors together unless somebody objects. Under public bidder, other services and charges. We have been paying a person to mow our county lots. Last year it was five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Building Services has pointed out that they go out and tend to these lots to clean them up and to cut down trees, which has disappeared off the list of things that are being done. I would propose we buy Building Services a lawnmower and let them take care of the county lots. They offered.
They think they have.
They offered.
To do that?
Yeah.
It's been cheaper for years to guide, to contract it out, I don't know how it's sold.
Well, here you go, two thousand ten, seventy, seven thousand eight hundred and ninety. Two thousand eleven, nine thousand four hundred and forty. Twelve, eight thousand five hundred and sixty-five. Thirteen, seven thousand. Fourteen, five, five thousand eight hundred and eighty. That's pretty, that's a lot of money for mowing lawns.
You know, and I looked at this issue too and tried to figure out even how to bid it out. I mean, I worked with Heather, we, I just couldn't even get a handle on how to, because it changes every month. So it's, it was difficult to, to get out even to see if you could lower the cost that way. I had no idea that Building Services would have enough time even to do this.
Well, they're, as, as they told me, they're going out there anyway. People complain about garbage, so they're sending people out there to clean up the lots.
Do they routinely go out there?
Yes.
Well, I.
Will routinely call.
I'm not opposed to giving it a try, why not?
I'm, I'm not either, it just hasn't worked in the past.
You have how much in the budget?
For cleaning, ninety-five hundred.
Okay. I would propose we remove ninety-five hundred from, what would the rest of it be? Fourteen hundred?
Oh, the twenty-five hundred is for professional services, that would be for the abstractors, you follow up abstracts on.
Okay. So remove ninety-five hundred?
Yep, the only thing I have to do is sign, we're gonna buy a lawnmower, potentially buy that from our, or I mean, from family, from gaming revenues.
Okay. All right, and the last one is mail services. Dennis tells me we mailed out forty-one thousand five hundred and forty-six pieces of mail. Yikes. That's a lot of mail. Most of it goes through the mailhouse?
Yes.
So we get a discount?
Yes, just for the pre-sorting out.
Three cents per letter.
Yeah.
The, the new thing that's starting with the sheriff's office, they have to garnishments. I believe it's garnishments, they have something like certified mail return receipts signed. But they are increasing their sheriff's fees to cover that cost, those abortions, and in and out. So if we have to amend the budget, we'll amend it, and it's already washed out with revenue. Just waiting to see how this goes.
Okay, so I have the board expense, board administration, public bidder, cutting ninety-five hundred out of it, and mail services. All in one package, anyone want to make a motion to receive that?
Some moves.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That's, oppose, no, okay, sheriff?
Sheriff. Dennis, you're very good. Ninety-five hundred, right. Public, now you need a line I later.
All right. That was a real squishy lunch, and I only went through one top, so I have a lot of.
All right, uniform patrol, the, there's a, the reason that is less is because you moved somebody? We would be on page thirty-nine.
Uh, zero, zero, one, what, what number you looking for there? Page thirty-nine to General Basic Fund. Oh, the number, organized, okay, ten sixteen, organized, doing one hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars sixty-four. I'm assuming that's a move of an individual to another department. That's under uniform patrol, or is that?
Yes.
Supervisory organized, ten sixteen.
It's supervisory organized.
Yeah, we, we moved one deputy from one area to another.
Okay, so he'll show up elsewhere?
Yes.
Okay.
Dennis, does that have an impact, the road to general basic?
No. I tell you, just move to another individual within the general basic.
Right, correct, yes.
Okay. Comments on that? Investigations, page forty.
I had a question on overtime.
Where are we at? Under.
Ten nineteen.
Be ten nineteen. What were your question? I'm sorry.
It's gone from forty-two to sixty.
Dennis, can you explain that?
Okay, I think on that particular issue there, you're talking about overtime going from nineteen thousand zero.
Correct?
No, no, yes.
No, but he's still under uniform?
Oh, uniform.
Ten nineteen?
Okay, ten nineteen, that went up twenty-one thousand. Now that, I don't know why.
That's because you put our invest in there.
Okay, that's why, okay. If they combine invest, because you'll notice on next page when you get to it, they moved nineteen thousand over to this, so they combined it into one.
But we need that changed.
Yeah, we didn't do that.
Okay.
We didn't do that, because I, I got, I got the form here we submitted.
Okay, all the barrels done by our payroll and HR. So what, what, what should it be?
Well, the nineteen eight.
Man, if you're gonna speak, you need to offer your name.
We had submitted, um, general basic investigations, we had submitted nineteen eight sixty-three.
Tag number?
Yes, and somehow it got, it got put in uniform patrol.
Okay, so we're just, it's, the both lines are equal, we're just swapping them around.
Right, moving the nineteen eight seventy-three back into investigation.
Okay. Yep.
So what was the issue now?
The uniform, the invest money went into uniform patrol, there's actually needs to be.
It invest, I noticed it this morning when we got these, that our invest overtime had been placed in our uniform patrol. How that happened, we didn't submit that.
Well, you'd like to put it back?
Yes, we guess, yeah.
Benny? They want to put that back in?
The nineteen eight sixty-three, then I'll figure the fight and Ibers out. Yeah, so, different between that and that, yeah.
So the, the minus three-point-seven-six would be greater than that, not a whole lot, but on a million bucks, nineteen thousand isn't gonna amount to much.
Where are we moving it back to?
Invest.
Where's that?
Ten.
Oh, the next page, okay.
You'll see there's a rare winner. Japanese should have been.
Okay.
Nineteen eight sixty-three, we don't know how it got.
Forty-two, one sixteen. It will be left in overtime and patrol.
Okay. Forty-two, one sixteen. I believe it.
Standby pay, it's gone up dramatically, is there?
That, in uniform patrol?
Yes.
As you can see though, we weren't budgeted correctly for that last year. We had ten.
I see that, I mean, you already spent the half of the eight.
Right, that's why we're, that's. Right, now, that's why we're, that's what we're asking this time around, is thirty-eighty-two thirteen. Because we're halfway through it, so historically, I mean.
And the thing is, very many are contractual, we have no choice.
Yeah.
It's contractual, all contractual.
And also in the past, it was actually out of the wage line item, where now there's a little more, this, yeah, description to get it in the right bucket. So. This gives you a much better view of the actual costs.
And field training pay, is that the same thing?
Right.
Right, that's all contractual.
Alright. How about a motion on, um, Uniform Patrol? Knowing that nineteen something comes out of it.
Love to receive.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Alright, investigations.
Then we would just ask if that money they moved over there for, cover that overtime.
So, this would probably be really close to the zero in, uh, the increase.
Yeah, it'd be correct, that we aren't changing anything there.
Okay, discussion? Need a motion?
Would you receive?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Alright.
Okay, the next three budgets are those federal reimbursements for hit, hit the?
Hit the.
Hit the, Miss Marshall and Drug Task Force. We already reimbursed the overtime, but we cover the bike and diapers.
So, they have no effect on budget?
No.
Take a motion to receive these three grant programs?
Would you receive?
Give you a second?
Yikes.
Must've been Pat. Okay, do I have a, do I have a motion and a second? I need a second on, uh,
Those three grants.
Grant, three grant programs?
Second.
I thought Larry did.
Uh, yeah, I think Supervisor Lawson.
Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Correctional facility.
Can I just, clarification? They're not, I mean, they, you can call them grants, but it's an agent that's, is a drug task force agent or deputy that's in there, that's, that's that pay. The marshals are assigned to the, uh, one of our deputies is assigned a warrant, and so they fortunately pick up part of that salary high as, kind of. Just clarification.
Okay, corrections?
This one has several items, Dennis.
Yes.
Just whatever you wish to discuss.
Ten fourteen. Is that way on your spend, Denny, or you do not have the figures in there yet?
Ten four, there are figures in there.
Are you on the jail?
It's ten fifteen, zeros.
We don't have temporary employees, that's temporary employees, they don't have any.
No, ten fourteen.
Ten fourteen, there's numbers in there.
Right, but it's being spent at, uh, two million seventy, we got two million two hundred and two.
You're on page?
Page forty-nine.
Yep, I, and organize-
Ten fourteen.
Organized employees, they have a budget for new budget, two million one sixty-five eighty-eighty-six.
Mine's just two million two hundred and two.
I don't know where that's coming from.
Your book.
Really? Okay, it's two million one sixty-five, six, eight eighty-six.
So, I got?
What I got?
I got a different book.
Maybe they did that on purpose, Larry.
You think maybe?
They gave you a different book.
Jack, you wouldn't say, maybe my eyes gone bad?
No, that's what it says.
Oh, I know what it is, sorry. You got the old book. What that is, we moved a custodian from this line item here, goes into jail, over to the LEC operations. They no longer have a janitor signed specifically.
Yes.
That's the change, only I knew it's change. If you had my little friend out here, Larry, you'd have the update.
Yeah.
What we did there, so you can maybe understand, uh, we worked it out with, uh, Mike, and, uh, I, I just wanna say, I know this probably isn't part of the issue, but Mike's, uh, Building Services group has done an outstanding job taking over, uh, for what we were budgeted for somebody to do that job, it was coming out of our budget, and we felt it would just be better, so we talked to HR, that, uh, Mike would oversee him, and I can already see some savings. Mike's, uh, people have done a great job cleaning the place, but also Mike has a, an inventory system that, quite frankly, I don't know that we were up to snuff on what was getting ordered or not. Mike knows and tells him things, and I just wanna applaud, uh, Mike for taking on and Ed for helping us, and Mark when we brought it to your attention to get, uh, moved, and I think it's gonna be a benefit for all of us. So, that's the change.
He, I think originally was under Building Services, but assigned to your-
Right, and somehow it ended up being a toward that we picked him up, and I always wondered why, just think it's better this way. Yeah, we did come over there.
Eight eighty-six.
No longer, it's just three hundred thousand.
My math says it's still about a hundred thousand dollars.
More? No, actually, it's gone down from two million one eighty-seven.
What I'm, what I'm using is spent year-to-date, and that's why I asked for the figures right there.
Okay, spent year-to-date includes so far, the custodial, we have to move those over to Building Services. That we gotta move all the wages and benefits over to Building Services and the budget. The reason the budget's actually less, you're seeing expenditures, they do have a lot of turnover over there, so you've got top wages, you're going down to lower wages, so that's why in a correct book, and that's the only problem you have in this one, Building Services, where this changed, since I gave you the original book. But the wage has actually gone down organized because of the change over over there, going from this wage, hiring at this wage, so you're gonna have less money involved. Correct, we're not correct, are we?
That's it, there's, there's turnover in jail, I mean, these guys, the fellows that work here, some of them make a career, some of them is a stepping stone to another, to police agency, to state patrol, sheriff's office, we hire, uh, a lot of our people from the jail.
See, I understand it, but my question to you, Denny, is if the actual year-to-date is current?
One million one thirty for six months. Correct.
One million thirty-five.
No, I got a million one hundred and thirty.
Here, look at mine.
Reason this is, this is updated.
Alright.
That's the only one you're running the problem there, right, that one, where we move the personnel.
Okay, overtime went up. They're all looking at you.
Overtime went up because of the raises that were not factored in there. So, originally, last year, when we asked in the board, went with the one eighty-nine five, uh, it, we did factor in the, the raises for some of these people, so there's, there's the difference, and I think there was just a slight increase because of the twelve-hour shifts, but we were pretty close to being right at the one eighty-nine minus the raises, and that's, that's the cost factor there.
Okay. Let's get to the good stuff. Ten ninety-nine.
Um, real quick on the standby.
Yeah.
On the standby and the critical incident, it's not thirty-nine thousand zero sixty-eight, it's twenty-one nine twelve.
I, I, I probably wrote it down that way, Dennis.
I just copied what you had, but that's-
Yeah, I've, that's-
So, you take seventeen thousand one sixty-eight off then?
I'm, I'm, my accounting skills are not very well, since I am on that. But, I, it came out thirty-nine zero six eight, it's twenty-one nine is actual.
Okay, so the critical incident is out, it's on the standby pay then?
Right, I probably, what I did was try to show what the seventeen was in the board. And if you, you look up above, um, shift differential and acting sergeant pay would be cut more greater than the amount of the increase in, uh, for the standby.
So, the cut on standby pay would be seventeen thousand one sixty-eight?
Twenty-one nine. Right, you want twenty-one nine.
Right, total will be cutting one nine.
Oh, cutting. Okay.
And where did you say you cut to make up for that?
If you go up above in your, uh, shift differential, goes from twenty-eight thousand five fifty down to twenty.
And acting sergeant jail.
And acting sergeant jail.
Okay.
Twenty thousand to eleven, so.
Not to question contract, how it been moved so much, standby pay?
On the standby pay for our, our newly designed, uh, critical incident team, that's, we we decided there's a better way of doing how we're, uh, dealing with people that are non-compliant, so we need the team, and they're called out to deal with some of those, instead of us rushing in, we can have a team that will come in and help, I think Major Stollman might add to that.
They're, they're, we're forming a team where we have sixteen individuals, um, basically four are working, four are resting, four are on call, four are off. And these people are handling our mental health that we have to deal with, um, and they're getting specially trained, uh, to get that done. It's to de-escalate, instead of, what, what we have right now is most of our officers are trained for the mental health crisis that we have, and these people are gonna be specially trained. We also are trained in our classification, 'cause we, we can't, we used to just basically, you come in, depending on the crime you committed, that, that depends where we put you in the jail. Now we've run into with the mental health situation, we have to i- it's a process to figure out where we're gonna put inmates and who, what inmates we're gonna put together, it's called a classification system. To pay for the team itself, uh, we use SCAP, like, to get the team up and running, and then we found, uh, grant-type training, uh, it's called mental health first April, they're coming in in April to train this team up, but one thing about it is, they have to be on call. You're gonna have to have people that are on call to come in and handle this.
The, uh, crisis intervention team? Can that be funded through mental health instead of through the sheriff's department?
I could answer that for you. I know that we've attended mental health meetings, um, where Shane Walter is at, and we were discussing that with him, and, and obviously, if we could get funding through the mental health system.
When I, when I talked to him, Larry, he said that what he could do is hopefully get us some dollars for training, but he couldn't like budget or give us enough dollars for a classification team, he might be able to help us with offsets and training, but he wasn't sure.
See, the next meeting's February third, February tenth?
Yeah, I think I ever written that.
It's February tenth.
And I, I intended to ask that question at that meeting, because it could fund, uh, law enforcement. Because it would make a substantial difference.
Oh. It'd be huge.
Alright, make a note of that. For now, I don't know that we can move it out.
Or, right, since, since August, up until this point, we've had a hundred and thirty-one in the jail, staggering.
Crisis?
Right, we, we call them use of force, but we've had a use of force. It's a hundred and thirty-one, a form of care, and it's crazy.
Okay. Ten ninety-nine, propose new employees.
Uh, we kept the clerk out of that.
You what?
The clerk, we're not asking for the clerk.
Okay.
Two hundred and fifty-nine?
Okay.
That's out.
Yep.
Okay.
And you got, you got a lieutenant in there, is that done by sergeant now?
No, we have a lieutenant that commands early in the day, um, at night, he have no command. So, you're answering a couple of things here with a lieutenant. One is, with the rules and regulations that are out there that constantly keep getting dumped on us, how we can treat these people, stuff like that, we have to document, document, document. That's what we have to do to protect us against liability. Right now, on overnights, our sergeants are trying to keep up with that, uh, it, it's not possible. Their sergeant's jobs are to run the jail, that's what they do, handle the inmates, stuff like that. The other thing they're gonna have is PRIA, uh, in August of two thousand and sixteen. PRIA, commands, comply, to comply with PRIA, you have to have a command presence twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And that's above the level of the first-line supervisor. So, that's spelled out in PRIA, it, it's gonna have, you're gonna have to have this eventually, and with myself and Lynette, w- we put in a lot of hours, but we can't handle twenty-four seven. Don't even go.
Yeah, nice.
I, I, I mean, I will, on some of this, I, I like to point out and stuff, I know that it's an increase. At the same times, for fiscal year two thousand thirteen to two thousand and fourteen, uh, our revenue went to eight hundred and ninety thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. That's a substantial increase, um, what we're, what we were, uh, generating before, I'm kinda like a PJ, I don't like to use the word revenue, 'cause that's really not our job, but that is what it is.
Federal programs?
Um, it, it's all, it, it's all kinds, your, our electronic monitoring, our vote for corrections, our work release, our inmate room and board. Our room and board, uh, if we go with pay by jailer, uh, should increase another hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, with them going out and collecting the funny, money. With the, uh, uh, kiosk system that we're looking at going to, um, you're looking at about twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars on top of what we're, we're already getting. So, I, I think that the dollars are there to do this.
Yeah, these fees that we collect basically are just, you know, through the marshals, through the work release, those that are paying, the room and board. We grab social security when we can from those that are, and we'll just get social security dollars, it doesn't add up that much, but a lot of that is through electronic monitoring, room and board, as you see, uh, I don't know if you have it, but telephone through Securis is around thirty-three thousand. These are dollars that, uh, were taken in, it's eight hundred and ninety thousand.
And that kinda goes with the lieutenant, to run this stuff and keep track of it, i- it's too much to put on the sergeants and the staff to do. That's why I was initially asking for a lieutenant and a clerical position, so the clerical person can help, but obviously, tight budgets, we, we went ahead and ruled that out. Um, even there, when you talk Securis, we're gonna see an increase on that, we went to a system now where, uh, you can visit from your house. Uh, you can pay a fee, you can get on your laptop, and you can visit your loved one in our jail, while you're covering your own home. We're, we aim to please.
With your credit card.
Yes.
With your credit. And, and some of this too, you're, you're limiting your liability, like right now, all money that comes into the jail, we handle it. Uh, going to the kiosk system, um, with whatever group we have, will no longer handle money. Uh, when it comes in, it goes into this, uh, machine, and when the inmate gets out, you punch in their ID number and spend some on a little debit card. And that's how they'll go and take that to prison, or take it when they leave our facility. That's a big deal, because we do, we're cops, we do have some problems with our math at times, and we have to pay, uh, when we don't do our budget right. So, that's a big deal, we won't take money anymore either, if you wanna give money to your, uh, loved one in our jail, there's gonna be a machine outside, you're gonna have to go feed the money in that machine, or use your credit card to put money on their account. And all this takes place automatically, so we don't have to deal with that type of stuff, and, you know, with not being able to hire correctional officers, this is a great way to free them up to do correctional officer work, and help with the safety, I mean, the biggest thing for me is the safety of the officers in the jail. Now we're not gonna be doing a lot of the stuff that we have to do.
I crossed out the clerical, but how much was that?
It's gonna be, it's-
The one you eliminated, the one you eliminated.
Oh, you want me to do the math on those?
No, 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 no.
Ninety-four thousand six hundred and eighty is the cost of a lieutenant.
But what was the clerical, I crossed it out?
Fifty-one, two fifty-nine.
Fifty-one, fifty-nine?
Two, two fifty-nine.
Thank you. I'm trying to do math myself.
Don't get too excited, cause I think they're gonna have a budget on the next page, so.
Could you do, just, I'm just gonna throw this out there. Could you do the extra paperwork with the clerical staff instead of the lieutenant?
The, the thing with that is by August two thousand and sixteen, you're gonna have to have that lieutenant anyways. So I'd rather have the lieutenant doing the work and then they come back and approach you for a clerk later.
Of course you would.
Well, it's just, you know, it's long overdue because in all actuality, when, when our lieutenant leaves at four or five, Greg goes home at six or seven, then the place has got a sergeant only. And if you look at how most agencies are run at our level, they would have still an administrator there around the clock to make sure. Look at the police department, their patrol shift, their night shift has sergeants and then it has a lieutenant overseeing that operation at night. That's just, you should have an administrator around the clock.
Do you feel like that will help to mitigate some of the liability exposure that we have as a county?
Running a jail, the one thing I've learned coming into the jail, Major Whitman for a long time, he can tell you the same thing. Really, the deck is stacked against us on how we have to treat inmates and the stuff that we have to do. You're always gonna have that potential. I think that's your number one liability probably in the county is that jail. But will this help? Absolutely. And most of the stuff that we have happens after we get home.
That lieutenant and the training.
Are probably the two biggest issues, and that's what we're asking.
Might be folklore, but years ago, I heard a lot of stories about that second shift.
You, you need a, you need a manager presence. You really, uh, where we're at today.
Okay, moving on.
Twenty-three oh one.
I'm sorry, sorry, what?
Twenty-three oh one, food.
Yeah?
I didn't ask what you mean.
You look way short.
I, I guess I don't know exactly on the contract, cause it's with CBN, how that gets worked out. I, I didn't increase it because it all has to do with your numbers in the jail. How many people are we feeding, how many people were not feeding? I, it's like rolling dice. We've, we've had, uh, I think our average is two, two hundred and fifty-six is what we've been averaging. That's a, that's a big number. I don't know that it stays that way over the next year. So I didn't, I just didn't ask for an increase in it. Cause what if you come in and say, Laura, I'm under next year?
Yeah, Larry, in fourteen, uh, the actual was three oh nine and we were budgeted two seventy-four. And so, uh.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Uh, it just, uh, it's getting lopsided. At the rate we're spending, we're looking at three twenty-eight this year.
Right.
But we, we've been consistently running with higher numbers this year.
But you're just saying maybe it needs to go up.
Maybe add more.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, well, that's at least fifty dollars in short.
I, I agree with you.
Then you gotta come up with something.
Right. Usually end up coming to Dennis for a budget amendment, but I'm not sure that's the way to do it. Those are numbers, uh, Larry, you know, having done this a long time, they're just kind of a cast. And, you know, we've been cut, we have it, and so at the end of the year, some of those we just can't figure out very well, and that's why we come back for amendment. If you wanted to put in where you think that we're probably gonna go, I would agree. That probably you'd be safe with the numbers we have to roughly say three hundred thousand or three ten.
But the, at the same time, at the end of the year, when you do that pay period thirteen, some of that would equal out. Or we've done a good job of regulating that budget or come in lower in the budget. That's why I didn't increase it, cause it's one of those things that you're looking at pay period thirteen to see where you're at, whether you're gonna be over or you were able to pay for that on some else.
Your budget.
Okay.
Well, you're the boss.
Oh, no. Twenty-nine forty.
But can I explain one before you get that far? Twenty-nine fifteen, it stayed the same from last year. The thing the board needs to remember is this year, we're taking two hundred and thirty-five thousand for nurses out of reserves. Next year, even though the number's the same, we can't use reserves again, so we're using the regular funds to cover this. Just so the board's aware of what we're doing here. Even though the number hasn't changed, this year's our reserves, and next year cannot be out of reserves, but it's in our total package.
The next year, we'll be on the hook for two hundred and thirty-five.
Yep.
More.
In addition to the four thirty-eight.
Right.
Addition to the.
Right.
We have done a really good job, Lynette and the courts meet on Fridays, of, and with the county attorney's office, seeing who we can get in and out of jail, um, seeing who we can release if they have medical conditions. We've had a couple females that have gone into labor. We hurried up, got them in front of the judge, had them signed out, told them to come back. And I thought it was a little early, but they want her back in three weeks. Uh, that was, but that's how it works. And, uh, so we have done a really good job of trying to keep our costs down in the medical. But there are just some things that we can't control. I know PJ's office, you know, there, there's a community standard that we don't want certain people released, and they, they do a good job along with the courts to make sure some people shouldn't be released. So then we're stuck paying that.
Dan, I said, this is on the nurses?
Right.
Did you amend the budget already?
Yes. Right, it's reflected in.
So the additional amount is in?
It's already figured in our shortfall. Are the nurses full bore now or are they full staff?
And that's, that's another issue we have. We have never been able to get to them. We just had another one. Listen, I don't think you dream about being a registered nurse to come work in Woodbury County's jail. That's our difficulty. So, uh, you know, Mercy might have to look at some things about, you know, that's up to them, how they're gonna pay them. But I think some people leave because it's a high stress jail. I mean, there's a lot of things going on that they probably didn't imagine going on. So it takes a special person, and I, I agree a hundred percent we're gonna lower standards. We're gonna keep it at an RN, and that's what we need. But it's gonna take that special person, and, uh, so we keep running short and we hope to get there, but.
We're at, we're at three now. Um, one had resigned, but she came back. And one is going on military right now, and she's gonna be going on her military for about nine months. But she'll be coming back, is what she's told us when she's done. So we have, we have three. The biggest thing that we've found is when they accept the job and then they walk into that facility, they don't come back the next day. They say, oh, thank you.
So even though we have two hundred and thirty-five thousand, what did you say for nurses? Hypothetical, hypothetical number, you may not spend it all.
No, I, I don't know. At one point, we talked to Rosie quite a bit on, uh, the interviews and how they're doing stuff. I know they bumped the pay up, uh, to help entice people to come, but.
But we do pay overtime pay.
Yeah.
People, so that's, I mean.
The ones that are there.
Figure that one, you're making free work overtime pay.
The ones that came in were very passionate.
Right. We're not the twenty-four seven, and with four nurses, we could put a nurse on each one of the teams who work twelve-hour shifts, and that would pretty much, you know, get us to where we need. But as the sheriff said, even there though, they can't cover the whole twenty-four hours. You don't want to work overtime.
Did you tell me you're gonna do some training for your jail staff in that area? Something to do with mentally ill?
Right, we got that coming up.
That's part of that training.
Okay. Twenty-nine forty. You moved six grand from court security to wearing and safety apparel.
Well, my understanding is maybe I couldn't do what I did, cause it comes out of different budgets, and I don't understand that. You're basically run under in, in court security on their wearing and safety apparel, then run over to the jail. And so what I was trying to do was get it so it's, they equal out. Doesn't show that jail is being over and that being under.
You got a.
If we can pay out general sub, we should pay out general sub. Because general base where we got some problems, general sub, we don't have the big problem.
What's that mean?
That'd mean we move the six thousand back to general sub.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with that. It's just one shows under, the other one's gonna always show over. That's the bulk of our stack for.
But then we probably should, but it really should be them. So maybe we should move it back.
Yeah, that's.
We need a, but if you're paying for our general basic, we need to have the money there.
Right.
So let's leave it the way it is.
All right, okay. All right, now comes a good one.
One more before we get to, how many again, Mark? Twenty-nine sixty.
Uh, you change that back to forty thousand eight hundred.
Is that for janitorial supplies? That they'll be buying building services?
Uh, yep, that's gonna go to, no.
Betting.
My understanding is though, the system that Mike is setting up is gonna, is gonna, it can cover all of that. Everything that we're ordering. Mike has got a computer system where we'll have shelves with the stuff on it, and he'll keep the supply side up on it. And our hope is that, uh, that does reflect in some savings where we're not ordering when we don't need here or something like that on it.
So you, it's all right to move it back?
Yeah, I, I talked to Mike about it, and I, I think we both agree, we're gonna try and move the forty thousand eight hundred.
So that's fourteen thousand two hundred reduced there.
Okay. Now, can I go?
Yeah, you can, uh, sorry.
Forty-two twenty.
That's the school of instruction, and what you're gonna see is, you know, your eyes might pop out. So we've been budgeted four thousand dollars for sixty-three employees, which come to sixty-three dollars and seventy cents per person. And, uh, I did get a, talked to a couple attorneys that have had, uh, passed, uh, litigation against the county. They were, uh, they wrote a letter, obviously you have it, and they talked about the importance of training and how to, uh, stay out of some litigation. You know, training is part of, uh, deliberate indifference. And, uh, we need to discuss the importance of training. So what happens is we, we have proposed to have training like our deputies. We do a lot of in-house training, and we do it quarterly. And we bring in people to, uh, put on, uh, an eight-hour day about a variety of topics. And so for our jail staff, uh, popping a video in and telling everybody to watch it isn't, isn't training. So we have proposed, as any other sheriff's office, that part of good training is that you meet as your team, as your shift, and you do it four times a year. And we, we have never done this, and that's why the costs are there. But that's what it costs to backfill when that shift is not there. So there, there is part of the training cost. We have, uh, scheduled, uh, first responder, first aid training or something for mental health. That's in March.
March or April.
March and April. And so these are the programs we want to teach, not about, um, defensive tactics all the time. You need to teach about de-escalating situations. We need to talk about, uh, dealing with the mentally illness, and that place is full of a number of people that are on a lot of medications, and we have constant battles. So we need to teach and change the culture and environment to learn how to de-escalate and not maybe exacerbate it to be a bigger problem. And so that's why training comes so important for our staff, and it hasn't been. I mean, obviously, you're not gonna get much for sixty-three dollars a person who can't afford the registration fee.
So have you specifically identified what kind of training you're gonna do? Or you just kind of have a general idea of what?
Oh, no, we, we have stuff like, we, same thing with deputies. We have in-house instructors that teach, where they, we've sent them to school to be instructors. And then we reach out to the outside, like county attorneys, uh, they come over and they keep charge deputies during in service. For deputies, it's, you know, like B and R and the stuff that they need to go out there. On our side of the house, on the jail side, one of the things is we'll be reaching out to the state directions and their instructors to come in and teach our staff.
So it's how to de-escalate would be one training.
De-escalate, uh, obviously defensive tactics.
Defensive tactics.
You're in half, Russian training.
Okay, that's, I'm wondering, what is it?
Our people, when, when an inmate leaves our facility, we send people with them, and they carry a gun. And these people are not qualified in, uh, shooting four times a year on the range. I, I don't know. I, I can't explain, you know, past, but they should be shooting four times a year. If you're gonna carry a gun, you had a hundred and thirty-one incidents of use of force. That alone dictates that we should be training these people consistently on use of force and how to appropriately use that force. You're gonna have first aid for the mental health, but also first aid and CPR. That has to be done every year. Uh, your defensive tactics is four times a year, your weapons are four times a year. Some will be thrown in there, uh, cell extractions, and that's how go in and take an inmate appropriately out of the cell that's causing a problem for you. I had a video I was gonna play, but I didn't bring it, cause I don't know if it's appropriate to play.
And none of that, no one has that kind of training now that's working? No one has, knows how to do that?
I wouldn't say they don't.
Or they don't have current, there's not a training program?
There's nothing saying that you will train them appropriately to do the job that they're doing. They are doing the job, and they do do it very well. I'm not quite, at the same time.
I hear you. I'm, I'm not gonna argue with training.
I know. Is this where in the courthouse security, you took twenty-four thousand out a year out of the training?
Twenty-one thousand.
Yeah, if you. Go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to remember where that is. It's somewhere.
That's.
It was taking one training day away from us. There's four teams in the jail, so that's how you get to your number. For them each to have four trainings, it comes to the eighty-seven thousand zero four.
But there's, there's a difference here. You're not courthouse security, it's court security. It's your Kevin Horselees.
It was in the courthouse security plan to take upon one of us to reuse this.
My understanding is that the board's logic was to go with the first proposal, the one thirty-three.
Right.
Then in order to mitigate the cost to the, the county and to make it a little more financially palatable, it, you were essentially saying that there'd be three, three days of training.
We'd have three.
Or three sessions instead of four, bringing that cost down subsequently.
Instead of training, once every three months, we'd do it every four months. And that would take that cost down, cause it's about twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollars for training.
Boy, I bet you hate to give up that training though, when you think it's so important.
If I can have it, I would, I would, I would like training every month.
Right, that, that probably was a big, big sacrifice.
It stands.
Okay.
Plus, we're going from hardly having any to hit three or four, so we'd be tickled that we, you know.
Forty-four seventy-five. Maintenance contracts.
That's your, I believe that's your taser cameras?
Yeah, that is the, uh.
Taser cameras?
Pay for the contract to keep the, actually probably all of it. Our, uh, with our camera system, we need to have a retention of X amount of months. And then also the storage space in the cloud for our taser cameras that all our jailers are equipped. Those are gonna be ongoing costs to maintain the storage evidence that we need for whatever may arise.
Okay, anyone else?
You haven't spent anything this year for that?
Uh, on the.
Maintenance contract?
Maintenance contract, eighty-seven hundred.
Does it all come due at the end of the year or something?
I've got twenty-one hundred, so.
Once, once a year.
Damn, I figured old again.
You've got that other book.
I got the book you gave me.
Gave you a bogus book.
No, nothing's changed except all the one budget numbers.
Yeah. We pay them, Larry and Jackie, we pay them once a year. That's it.
Okay, I, I wonder.
Yeah. Anyone else?
But it has gone up quite a bit.
Right, because we went to that, uh, I think we got on board with that this, what did we did these cameras? June, huh, June, March?
Yeah.
Can we go ahead and flag then forty-two twenty, the school of instruction as a potential? I know that, we don't wanna talk courthouse security right now. I get that. But as something to look at.
Okay.
Three versus four days.
Right, yep.
Count that, Dennis?
Yep.
Okay. Motion to receive.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no?
Dennis, did you see the numbers? How much is this budget?
Past purpose for Lynette's is eighty-two thousand six eighty-seven reduction.
Not including item four-two-two-zero.
Correct, correct.
Good. Okay, Prairie Hills. I understand that, um, in these figures are fifty-five thousand for heat, nineteen thousand for electric. Questions?
Yeah, the food's being charged someplace else either that or we just didn't use Prairie Hills. Who checked?
You must remember Prairie Hills was down a little bit, then you did close Prairie Hills a while.
Down a lot.
Not my, at some effect, uh. I thought your numbers were down, but now it's your numbers back up at Prairie Hills.
Right, right, we were down last, I think it was summer, down to three and four at a time, but now we're running, I believe, nineteen, I think is the number somewhere.
Okay. Take a motion to receive?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Administration?
They did combine supervisor, I think, with appointing deputies here, ten oh five, ten oh nine. I believe it went from eighty to seventy-six to a hundred and fifty, or a hundred and sixty-nine. I assume that's what happened there.
Yeah, that's where you get into the uniform role and we move people around from the appropriate areas.
Appropriately, I guess.
I heard you questioned the uniform earlier.
Yes, sir.
I know we're looking twenty-four months out here. Twenty-five oh one gas and oil. Tremendous savings there, I don't know how long it's gonna last, uh...
Today I heard, today I heard it was going back up, so I don't know. We figured it at two-seventy-five a gallon. We figured that's probably a safe number because last year when we were three and a half up to four, uh, we were, if you noticed when you drove in here today, gas went up every night.
Yeah?
Yes.
I'm on them too.
Was, I saw it by sixty-nine this morning, it's back up to one-seventy-four, one-seventy-five and I saw a story this morning that where they said it's gonna start climbing up. I can tell you this though, we have noticed a substantial savings right now. I wouldn't say that way, but, uh, in another thing that, I know it's another issue, maybe it wouldn't be, that I wanna, um, talk about, Todd, we went to this fleet card system, right? Really think the county should look at it. We, we are saving a great deal of money on this fleet card and, uh, if it was this tax, there's a number of things, federal and state tax, we're saving, there's a number of things and it also keeps track of everything, you know, how our guys are, it's a computer printout and everything, it's a, something that I really think...
Where do you get the fuel?
Wherever, everybody accepts it.
Kinda like the highway patrol?
Yes.
Right, you get a, you get a wage or credit card and it's, you can use it just about anywhere.
And we are, I don't know, it's, it's been good for us. We get a printout every month, you know, before we relied on the guys doing the gas log, it just kinda went off.
This is, everything's done, put the card in, enter PIN number, ID number, enter the mileage or if you go and have a car booked on somewhere, you present the card to the vendor and, and then you receive a report on every card that you have in your fleet and it tells you exactly how much that person's spent on fuel, repairs, uh, kind of repairs were done. It's, it's already there for you and I think Jennifer talked about the tax side where they, they pay all our taxes right after the three.
Okay, uh, forty-four, forty-one, forty-one. Cell phone expense, those are your air cards?
Right, we don't have, I think we only have two people with cell phones. One is our drug agent who has what we call, for lack of better terms, a snitch line, some enforcement may call in or whatever, and then the other one is for our nurse on call. Otherwise, we don't have cell phones, those are air cards for all our computers in our car and that's what's allowed us to actually move out of climbing hill into the rural area, working patrol and we can, you know, sit in the community, do our police reports and things such as...
Okay, any other questions on administration? Need a motion?
Received.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Civil division?
That's all wages.
Doesn't change so, wages went up.
Organize employees, did you add somebody?
We added somebody, right, we added it.
Airway.
We added a person in there because we were trying to catch up to a lot of papers, some of the papers we're serving, those are four deputies.
And all deputies now, no civilians?
Right, right, well, last civilian left a couple years ago, anyways, um, gave us a deputy intern and that's worked out well.
Need a motion to receive?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Highway safety?
We do not have a sheet for that, that's all reversible.
Right.
Right.
That is a sheet?
Yes, receive it.
Need a motion to receive?
Move to receive.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Okay. Crime investigation, oh, you just never hear?
Yeah.
That went down, if you replace West with like Lord.
Lord, yes, right.
That's why it went down.
Move to receive.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Air, need a motion to receive?
That much is on a zero, that ain't an air program, one way. Do it after you receive that, that's just to let you know that there did go away, but they did have funds.
Never mind.
Sixty-one.
Except we're not doing it.
Right, you don't have to do anything, let you, let's just let you be aware that they did have a program to help them out, they don't now.
Covenant security. Two cars.
Right.
Can we hide that somewhere else?
Potentially, when we get down to the end, we're gonna, I've got some suggestions to come back to the board to kinda move things around a little bit, so it's on the list.
We'll say on two things on their school of instruction, it was only a thousand twenty-five, but we put that into the, other...
Into the jail part.
Yeah, and so that was, that part we were on.
Okay, questions?
Ten nineteen overtime. I mean, you all, you're probably on hard of pay fifty-five, but that's up quite a bit.
That's the high-profile, uh, court cases, the few murders that we've had in the community that really ties up our resources along with, you know, county attorneys busy, the police get busy, but we're the ones providing all the security and, and so then we have to call in deputies off duty at work.
And you have a choice on that, so...
We also added sizable increase in that mental health, uh, cause that's a division that transports around a metal and substance and with, uh, bed shortage that we have here, when we get the order, uh, we have to find a bed, so if it's Mount Pleasant, we're headed to Mount Pleasant tomorrow.
They closed it.
Wow, okay, but that's a, that's a big part of it where we really had to do a lot of transportation out of county, uh, and that's eating up overtime 'cause they can't get there to do that.
You know the field trading paid ten twenty-seven? You have zero, but you've spent seven ninety-seven. Is that somewhere else?
In their contract, in, in, in the contract for that side of the house, every two years they can rotate and when they, they can shift each other out and when that happens, we have to train the deputy. We have zero next year because it's an off year, they're not gonna, it's the following year, they'll have FDM training again, cause they have to train up the new guy that comes into that division.
Okay.
Okay, need a motion?
Move to receive.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Uniform patrol, row basics. It's up pretty much because of salary.
Right.
Need a motion to receive?
Move to receive.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? We're getting close, here we go.
Okay, the next three are just informational purposes for the forfeiture fund, their donations, the church restricted donations, those are at his discretion and the board basically has to approve what you submit.
Right, we, uh, we are looking at under, um, we have a JAG grant. There's one that might have gotten us.
Ten thousand in a JAG grant?
There's, we don't, we don't have a JAG grants here, we really don't budget those, we never know how much we're getting. Okay, we, we do use that money to purchase some items i- instead of asking you to budget. So, um, our forfeiture funds were almost eighteen. I, ideally when I was a chief deputy before, we'd like to have a kind of a minimum of twenty and anything above that we might use for different things. In years past, we have bought, uh, a vehicle, but now, uh, since Haida dollars are helping us, they are, uh, paying for a lease of a car, so that is helping, so, you know, we may not use some, yeah, so we get a lease payment on, on the, uh, the sale.
Yeah, we can't say much.
Can't tell you what kind of car.
Top secret.
But it's, uh...
So I have to kill us if they do this.
It isn't like, uh, in the movies, let me tell you what happens.
Need a motion?
We lived in the...
I would say that, it's a lot like in the movies.
Need a motion to receive the non-tax funds?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And Jennifer?
Jennifer is very...
She's backing you up way back there.
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanna say before they take off, he's not playing for a lot of you that...
Good afternoon. You put her in the middle, she's looking...
She takes care of the budget, so might as well have the real person talk.
All right, here we go. We're gonna start with administration. Any questions, comments, thoughts? Basically is up four percent, which is, uh, salary.
Move to receive.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Okay, the next one's a grant, need a motion?
Move to receive.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Edward Byrne, well, actually, yeah, I better do it now. Move to receive, Edward Byrne?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Does everyone know what Edward Byrne, Grant is? I know we got some couple...
Will you remind me, I should know.
But it's simply what for our drug prosecutor, um, we share dollars with the police department and a couple other entities and they pay for our, our drug prosecutor through that grant, so, at least they pay seventy-five percent and we pay twenty-five percent, so, it's a big difference.
But it's been slowly?
Slowly, yes, and every year they threaten to take it away fully, but, you know, we hang in there.
Very good. Juvenile activity? Questions, comments?
I'm sixty-three sixty, could you buy that TV and stuff out of this year's budget?
Uh, possibly, I don't know, I'm not gonna know until I get a little bit closer, but, um, we're, are we on juvenile or are we still?
Juvenile.
Cause they had the same thing also in the county attorney's administration.
Right. Um, possibly they're, we might be able to...
One of the things you have to look at is we have, I believe, two attorneys up there that get performance bonuses that weren't funded last year, so we gotta take that into account. So we, we've done the best we can for the last three, four years now, um, but that's, that's probably coming closer to the end, so we appreciate that being covered this, but it's still part of the juvenile budget for this fiscal.
Right.
It's in your contracts, so like, whatever, it's in there, you should have it in there.
Need a motion to receive? Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? County attorney, jury and witness, operating, zero. The next one also, county attorney, forfeiture fund, that again, washes, right?
Right. You have a hundred thousand in there, what are you, it's your discretion, how you spend it, what do you spend it on?
What we try to do is spend it wisely, there's rules and regulations, that's what we can't spend it on, uh, we haven't thankfully needed it yet, um, as most of the board members and new ones all know, we try to be diligent in our board every year, which we've been successful doing, so, we may use it for certain things such as training that is covered, if there's a special training out there for certain prosecutors, equipment that might come up, we can maybe spend it, but we can't supplement the budget with forfeiture funds, that, that's the biggest.
Yeah, it's also important to remember that the forfeiture things are invested by Michael Tejada, who buys and places in the banks and so the money's not just sitting there, it's, it's being loaned out by local banks to local economic development, so it is serving a purpose even though we do not spend a little bit.
You didn't say anything about making any money, huh?
Well, the interest rates are near to zero, but at the same time, uh...
I realize that.
Yeah, it is a benefit for people in Riverdale County to, to make loans to help their businesses and that kind of thing. So right now essentially it's not being used by us to buy products from companies outside of Riverdale County, it's being used for Riverdale County, uh, to build.
And we're actually looking around with our forfeiture collections, with this new fire collection, part of the duties of that attorney will be forfeiture collections as well, so we're hoping to help our partners with the service department, uh, pick up some extra funds as well for things that they talked to you previously about.
And the reason we budget lines, so we don't have to mend it down, we're all, we usually budget what you have in there for cash.
Correct.
That way you don't have to come back.
Need a motion to receive the, uh, jury and witness fees and the, uh, forfeiture fund?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay?
Thank you. Please hit it.
Okay, building services.
I'm trying to come back, I'm not sure where we stepped out to. So if you wanna start that, can you answer anything hopefully?
Boy, that's risky offer.
Hopefully, I'm Renee, I gotta go down to collecting building services.
Very good. Uh, who's that, Eddie? Shoved the water main breaking, I think he's out there.
I texted him, he said we're up.
All right, we're gonna go with Eddie.
Mike, you ready? Pretty, pretty much your big increases in the utility line items.
Okay, courthouse, we'll start with that. It's up thirteen point seven eight percent. Salaries are up three and a half percent, benefits up four point seven. The biggie is in commodities.
What, I guess the easiest way to explain it is, is we went through this budget and categorized, categorized everything, instead of kinda pulling from here, pulling from here, pulling from down here, and we, we went through the last three years and, and, I shouldn't say how they did, how my secretary did for me, but, and then we came up with a, an overall usage and that's, so, before we didn't have everything coming out of the same thing, we, it was never properly done.
Coated.
So, that's why you see the big jumps in different areas, but then you'll, you'll see it different over here. Uh, believe me, we, uh, we worked pretty hard and fast on this to, to get it ready. And, uh, mainly due to the markups that have been laid out and I have kind of a, uh, a late to know. So, I think we, we come up with this pretty good. And that's why you see these big differences.
Let's say forty-three, zero, one. We're jumping ahead here. FY fifteen year to date says zero. Just kinda looking to.
It's on natural gas. I'm assuming LP, you're buying it once a year?
Well, what, what that, the LP that we buy is actually for our source of high-speed power. Uh, not available. That's not too easy. They, you know, the LP that we buy.
But, but this is for your actual gas from Mid-American.
Well, that gas is different than LP, right?
Well, this is natural gas and LP.
And this is where you're saying natural end gas.
Went from sixty thousand to eighty-five thousand.
Well, on that one there, we, uh, uh, on that one there, now we did add, we, we jumped it up. Last year, uh, from what I, from what I'm told, I didn't get it on par, but I know we actually got an extra hundred and sixty thousand dollars last year to cover. Uh, so I, so yes, we did add some in there to help cover what our cost normally is because of the.
Well, your actual from seventy-seven and then eighty-one, so eighty-five is.
Well, and I think because it's zero there, I got a feeling that the natural gas and electric's being caught on the same lineup. If you go up to electric power, they're sixty thousand already. So, I got a funny feeling that they, you're not splitting the electric and the gas between the two lineups. That's just what costs. So, you see zero, you know, the natural gas, you've got it all in the electric.
I see. Yep.
Where do you see the electric?
What's the lineup?
Forty-three, ten.
The lineup is forty-three, ten. I think that's what's happening, you know, in the rest of the board here. That sixty that actually represents both types of natural gas and electric.
Woo, yeah.
It's gotta be, cause I can't believe electric's that high.
Well, I'm sure we've probably got a few hiccups in there, cause we threw it together pretty fast already. So, uh, like I said, I, I, I feel that, uh, the way we've done this budget this year here is really gonna level out and really be good.
If you could, could you go back to the bills that you have paid and see if that's what's happening? And we can split it out and move the natural gas where it should be for future years on budget.
Right. And there's a few things we gotta actually pull through and fix. Because, you know, due to the jail and there's some other items that shouldn't happen here now that are gonna be put in. Uh, also, uh, I don't know whether we're gonna have, right now we still have other budgets to, to do for other areas, like say like the social services now. You know, they're not in the building. They're, they're outside of it. So, now we've gotta pull from here, which would, they would most normally be under courthouse. But now it's not courthouse. It's something else. You know, we still take from here to go out there on certain of the items, so.
We probably should set up an already apartment division for that building. But every building you wanna keep separate, so we cut a track for what it costs.
Exactly. I mean, that's just something that's, you know.
You'll help do that?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, what's your pleasure? Need a motion on courthouse?
Moves received.
Need a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Law enforcement building? That may be balanced.
Now, this is where you'll see in ten fourteen, where we did transfer the actual individual from the LEC jail, correctional facility, to their budget here. So, it jumped from thirty-three thousand up to seventy-two. Correct.
Correct.
And moved some of the benefits up also.
And that'll probably come down with a new hire.
Yes, because the one retired was in your.
Yeah, I believe you guys did that today earlier. And just, you know, there'd be a huge difference.
Any other questions on LEC?
Oh, I don't know which one this would affect. But you volunteered to mow the lots. Where does that come in?
I volunteered to mow the lots?
Yes.
What, what I said is if we, if we could, which we could very easily do it for you, uh, which we don't have the money funding there right now for it. You guys got a fund right now that does your mowing, right?
Mm-hmm.
You just have to move that over to us.
Woo. We'll buy you a new one more. How's that?
Good, we'll get her done.
There you go.
Do you have enough manpower to take care of those lots off someone?
I think that, uh, we can definitely figure it in. Uh, we got no problem about working, working hard, so I'm not worried about it.
You're going out there anyway, right?
Yep, we go everywhere. So, I mean, right now, we go out and take a listen. Another thing is, right now, we actually go out several different times through the year to clean lots that are dirty, uh, cut trees down. Uh, we already do that.
I know you get complaints. Are we doing, you gotta go out?
And right now, we have no funds for that either. You know, but we, we just take a little here to, to help get it done. But usually it's just, just manpower. But we got a slow time. I'll send the guys out to take care of that stuff. And, uh, we actually bought some different equipment, uh, to help in that. Uh, when you get out in some of these areas where people don't mattresses, when you get a wet mattress that's completely soaked, I mean, you're talking couple, three hundred pounds, and, you know, a couple guys in watch manhandling them indoor trailer. So, we actually bought a tachin for a loader. We can take our loader out there and grab the stuff and nobody gets hurt. Uh, things are getting better for that. So, yeah.
Possibly. If they're gonna take over this spring, we should have some money left to our public bidder. We could buy the lawnmower out of that this year. So, you got.
You need a lawnmower to do that?
Yeah, we'd have to have a lawnmower. You probably need trimmers, you know.
What kind of lawnmower?
Gonna have to submit.
Zero turn or three?
Yeah, I could tell you this. If you mown a, an acre of cider, push mower, and you grab a zero turn, and you hear it's got a lawnmower, those zero turns gotta get you down quick and get you out. Uh, you definitely want something that's gonna be commercial grade, not a, not a bombers.
Do you have a trailer to haul?
We do have the trailer that is, we just bought that this year.
I get some prices on it.
Can you?
For work with it?
Okay.
Yep. For lawnmowers.
Yep.
Hand trimmer?
Hand trimmer.
Hand trimmer.
Not a hand trimmer or a mower trimmer?
Hand.
You're on a roll. What else?
Well, you wanna give me two seconds here to come over?
Need a motion to receive LEC?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Trosper Hoyt? Okay, questions? It looks like other services and charges went up. I don't know what that'd be, though.
HVA system, which is forty-four, fifty-five. Didn't we put new units up there? I thought we already did.
We put, we put a, uh, a new chiller in. We put a, a standby, uh, emergency backup in for, uh, motor vehicles, is what we did last year. And in actuality, we're actually gonna put something in later down the road to actually do something for, do enough tension in the same order.
And we argued reverse from, I think, DHS on that troll rate amortization schedule, which is why our quarterly administrators go up.
Right.
So, anyway, uh, but that system worked out great. Uh, it took a lot of complaints way down. So, juvenile attention is one that we actually should look at a thing down the road to put in there.
Don't you have it in here?
Uh, not, not, I don't think that was in there, uh, in this year's.
Can you explain the contracted garbage going from thirteen eighty-five to zero to zero to seven hundred?
Uh, where's it at?
Forty-one oh one?
Forty-seven.
That extra, well, we had to, we actually had to have it dumped one more time because our, our outtake is just too great. Jail gets more people, more people come in, more garbage comes up. I mean, it just, the cost goes up. And we're actually at a point now where, uh, I went out and made a deal with them. They actually dump that every day, every day of the week, and they only charge us for one extra dump, which is a darn good deal for us. Uh, originally, uh, our garbage cost was, uh, phenomenal. And, uh, I made a deal where I went out and got a bid when I first came in. And, uh, I think I saved us some forty thousand here. And that's, that's pretty good saving. So, actually our cost, or dump, we rarely do it when we first start. And that's, that's where I.
Um, forty-three oh one. I'm just back to the natural and LP gas. It's, we're at fifty-eight, forty-six right now. And I'm assuming that there may be some issue akin to what we were looking at earlier. Is it possible to get an update on all natural gas? Just as far as where we're at right now, cause natural gas is down tremendously from last year. So... But I don't think it's down that much, you know?
Yeah, that's awesome.
Okay, need a motion on Trosper Hoyt?
Moves received.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Prairie Hills? Went from thirty-four, six to zero?
To thirty-four, six. Zero increase.
Oh, okay, I get it.
Yep.
Questions? Need a motion?
Moves received.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eagles Club? Questions?
That's just keeping it in condition. Came a go until decided what to use it for.
It is. Is it completely empty?
No.
What, what's over there?
We, we got a lot of something there.
It's storage?
Yes, we're using it for storage right now.
Okay.
Yes, uh, we got some ideas, but I haven't presented them to the board yet.
Moves received. Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Mike was nervous about today. He did a good job. And so did you.
I do. Just wanted to know. I do appreciate the, the thank yous from the deal. So, I think you have stayed up pretty good. And, uh, I think we're, we're all gonna get it. So, uh, I'll think it'll be good. Good?
Okay, that's the end of the discussion on the lawnmower and the trimmer. No more stuff.
Alright, I'll, I'll bring it.
Auditor?
Who's first?
Recorder first, yep.
Uh, recorder first. Okay. Vital Statistics. Two point eight two increase, which pretty much, well, salaries went down. Benefits went way up.
And we do get reversed for, the gentleman does GPS. We get three quarters his reversed from the city, the county sensor, and, and that's the revenue's supposed to be in.
Questions? Need a motion on recorder vital statistics?
Moves received.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Administration?
That's Patrick. I don't know that's Dean.
Hello?
One point nine, uh, one point ninety-seven percent base wages. End of that is associated.
Questions? Need a motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Elections? Holy smokes. It's a parade. Here again, one point nine five percent increase.
Yep.
Salary, right?
Pretty much. Yes, it is.
Questions? Need a motion?
Moves received.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. General Primary. Explain this one, Dennis.
This one here facing Steve Kertu, but it's every other year. So, this year we'll have a primary in two thousand sixteen, and the general be the following year.
So, there's no funds needed at this?
There is for the primary. So, we're gonna have one June, correct?
Six.
Next year. June of two thousand sixteen. Right. So, there will not be a primary in this year on this budget.
Okay. Need a motion to receive?
Wait, wait. This, this year?
Fiscal year. Fiscal year.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It'll be June. Yeah, June of two thousand sixteen, and then, which is seven, the sixteen, seventeen budget, you'll have one in June.
General.
In the general, yep.
Need a motion to receive General Primary?
Moves received.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. General Election? Questions?
Nothing there. Sense.
So, that's just, that's a wash because it won't come up until next fiscal year?
Fiscal year, yep.
Do we need to receive this?
No.
Okay.
Just to show you what's going on.
School of Elections? Hundred percent?
We budget this ninety percent reversal. There are some administrative costs that the elections don't cover that crap, Steve.
Yes.
Yes, that's true on the next three sets of elections.
Alright, can we take those all together?
Alright, Pat. Take all three of them together.
Need a motion?
Moves received.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Auditor. Records Management.
These are funds in the direction of the auditor to spend, record management, and electronic, recorded electronic fees are at third discretion of the users. They have been used, I believe, from various sources back to tell you how or die.
Yeah, they, they electronic, um, fee isn't anything we keep. That all is a flush, it just gets moved to the, um, state. And it helps fund Iowa Land Records, which is our electronic recording portal and our search for our records statewide. So, that money is gathered by us, but every month it's, it's sent to the state registration office. And the records management, we use it this year to do some back file for our microphone. We're turning it into scanned images. So, here, hopefully by mid-year or so, everything that we have on microphone on the recorder side will be imaged and amped available.
Need a motion to receive?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. One last one. Human Resources. Where'd he go? Where'd she come from? Alright. Questions?
Got another employee there? Ten, ten wage plan.
So, what happens there between the department head, you'll notice head makes more twenty-four thousand a year.
Yeah.
And what happens is we change, they're not always changing allocation, cause like Gloria maybe pay out two different funds. Ed's pay out four different funds because they're trying to help the general basic fund out by putting, say, general basic, secondary roads, and, uh, self-help insurance fund. That way, the ones with the last three funds, we got tax and bill, or we're self-funded through eternal service. So, we've done this for years. Split it all up.
So, what went up twenty-five percent?
Training. Well, you did have training in there, medical fees. Let's see, is, okay, publications, four thousand five, or zero five went up twelve thousand dollars.
Wow.
Name, I think, I think, or Ed could, he was here.
We, there's some software that we bought that's very helpful for us. And then we got, um, another program that will be used for training for the employees, and it has about ten different modules. And then we got another one that is different topics. Very similar. We'll have it on the computer, employees can do it at work, or if they need to, you know, along with the other programs.
You see, you already bought it?
We're going to buy it. Never bought it yet. So, I'm just like researching that. I was kind of made a decision a little bit.
So, as you work with employees and identify needs, then they're plugged into a module?
Also on the publications, he's buying a lot of extra books that he read up on that we've never had, uh, office updated, the current laws or whatever, all types of human resources issues. And they're expensive books.
Questions?
And then on, uh, medical fees, that went up about ten thousand.
Those are, uh, employee tests, testing?
Yes, training employees, hiring, and then also, um, current employees when we have, if something happens. if something happens and they have to adopt that testing, they contact, you know, community or, or...
If you look at the history, they're getting more, the budget really showed them in the first place. What do you look at the history?
Questions? Discussion? Need a motion?
Will you receive?
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Man, that was a long day.
Jerry.
Yeah, well, it's not over yet.
I don't, I, I don't know.
We, we interviewed you, so don't...
Hold on.
We stuck around.
I, I don't know, we're gonna have to revisit almost all of these.
Some, yes.
Uh, the work's gonna come, the cutting's gonna have to come, so.
Well, giving update, we're around, half of the day. The bad news is, we didn't help our tax asking. The good news is, we cut ninety-two thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars off our nine hundred fourteen thousand shortfall in general basic, so now we're short eight hundred twenty-two thousand zero forty-one. We got two more weeks to go through, the third attempt, then we go through all the budgets. Um, some of the budgets I know are coming up, we'll cut our tax askings, but the, cutting some of the tax asking in certain funds does not help our issue in general basic. General basic has to come by four different ways. One, cash reserves, which are nineteen point five percent, which is three, uh, two and a half percent lower than our, um, twenty-two percent we asked for in our financial policy.
What's recommended by the state, twenty-five percent?
Twenty-five, but we went twenty-two. We have to slide for more than those reserves, we gotta take seven hundred thousand out this next fiscal year for that rise grant, which we will give back over a period of years, which is a paid while. So reserves, I'd recommend we don't touch that, except unless we do insurance holiday or some other items that could be coming up here. The second thing is, gotta find new revenues, which we heard some possible sources today from the sheriff and the county attorney. The fourth is cut expenses, and the fifth is not opter, exceed the cap. You got five options here, but one for sure is out, reserves, it probably, the cap is out, unless you can offset it with other reductions, other funds, come back to zero tax asking or tax rate, no freeze. That's our options. Not a whole lot of options, but they're pretty critical options too, in a lot of cases.
Comments? Jack, you've been sitting here so patiently. Good job.
Nobody wants, not nobody wants to got, nobody... Salaries go up, but you...
Okay. What's...
Just one thing, I'll clarify, I talked with Dennis about this, and we didn't want to confuse the issue here today, but as far as the budgets in those elections, it all comes out of the same, probably, some of it into administration logs, because it's in some of those, uh, other elections that we bill for, but they're administrative costs that we can't bill for anyway, so we're moving those into the administration budget, uh, so that we can more actually track what's going on in those smaller elections, but it won't be, it'll be now.
Okay.
It won't have a factor of recent. If ten percent isn't a magic number, that's why they'll move around for a post, till your administration.
Anything else? Move to, somebody wanna move adjourned?
He just declared adjourned.
Declared.
You guys just hung in there like troopers. Thank you, we earned a couple beers tonight, outside.
Uh-uh.
That's not on the budget. Pardon me. I said that, that's not on the county budget for years.
Wanna open up loads?
Matthew, I think we could probably, you got a second? Yeah, Derek, could be probably grab you as well. Right. Or one hundred thirty-six. You want me? Yeah. Yeah. We're... Yeah. They're all, they're all... I'll get some back. Okay. Okay. Not a problem. I will...
Have I got any more old pages in there?
No, those are my tools that actually changed. That's why I gave you these nice updated sheets, but that's my tools that I changed.
But you gave it to me here, I did that at home.
Yep, the rest of them won't change.
Okay.